Welcome to the June 30th, 25 State Council Meeting, 5:30 PM, City Council Chamber. We'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction, which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Sailing the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Dakota?
Here.
Counselor Getchea?
Here.
Counselor Janess?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Noon?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Mayor Rourke?
Here.
Counselor Scott?
Here.
Counselor Yem?
Here.
Counselor Belangia? Counselor Cho?
Here.
Vote to silence, Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Bernard Bernie Balle, who was born in Lowell, devoted to his wife Tracy Carmier for 15 years. After graduation, Bernie went to work for Shaw's Market as the bakery manager, as well as Dunkin' Donuts and Market Basket. Bernie then changed his field and became a plumber and started his own company, All Better Plumbing, which he continued until the end of his life, surviving him in addition to his loving wife Tracy, four children Jessica and the late Amanda Bernie Junior and Brianna Balle, two stepsons Sean and Brady Craig, his eight grandchildren, his siblings Paul and Janet Balle, Denise Tupin, Donald and Andrea Balle, Jean and Cindy Balle, sympathy to his family, relatives, and his many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Amen. Thank you.
There you go, Counselor. Any others? Madam Clerk, could you turn the lights? May they all rest in peace. All right. Section 2, Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication Remote Sub-Consipation, motion to accept or place on file by Counselor Charles, second by Counselor Dakota, all the favors AI, opposed motion passes. Items 3.1 and 3.5, these are all being referred to the Wiring Speaker for important recommendations for a final vote. So a motion to bundle by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Getchea, all the favors AI, opposed motion passes. 3.1, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas main at 1-9 Sheldon Street. 3.2, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas mains at Lady and Horn Streets. 3.3, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas mains at Beacon, Willard, and 19th Streets. 3.4, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas mains at East Merrimack Street. And 3.5, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of existing gas mains at D, School, Neuse-Balding, South Loring, and E Streets, and also Wood Court. Motion has been made and seconded. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Belangia? Counselor Cho?
Counselor Yem. Counselor Yem, yes.
Counselor Yem, I'm sorry.
Section 4, Communications from the City Manager, 4.1, motion responses. A, school buses parking interval, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Superintendent Houdon in the Traffic Division. Greatly appreciated.
Motion Response B, reckless bikers, Counselor Getchea.
Thank you to Chief Houdon for the response. I just have one quick question, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, to the chief. Chief, I thank you for your quick response to this. Have we seen any arrests since that last operation, the big operation we had?
Arrests for?
The motor vehicles, the mini bikes and dirt bikes and the roadways and everything?
Have we seen an additional arrest since that operation? I don't have that data.
Okay. All right. I'm just hoping that we can continue it and just keep the pressure on because I think we're doing a very good service for the city as we start to try to push these kids that are driving reckless out of our streets. Thank you.
Contemplant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to echo Counselor Getchea's as well as I heard, I received a number of calls from residents that, you know, they have really appreciated the work you do here in term of this arrests and this, you know, citation you give to these people, you know, and as well as a number of vehicle taking off the street. This is a successful operation. If I could ask you, Chief, for the people at home, if you could summarize the report to those at home to hear, the positive report here, so that people at home can hear what's in this report?
Sure. In summation, basically what we did is we reached out to some of our state partners with the environmental police and state police. They brought in additional assets in addition to our gang unit, our NRU unit, and some of our vice unit as well. We conducted operations where we targeted reckless operations, both in motorcycles, dirt bikes, mopeds, anything that's really been a nuisance complaint to the quality of life for the citizens. And basically, that's what we did that night. We also had the assistance of the state police helicopter to obviously give us eyes on a bigger scale, where we were able to follow some of these individuals and not, and stay within our pursuit policy.
Right.
Which is very important for the, you know, for the city and the safety of everybody that's out there. And we basically wanted to send the message that this type of operation, the reckless endangerment that we see, and the reckless operation is not going to be tolerated, and we'll do these types of operations as needed.
Also, in addition to the state police helicopter's assistance, is it true that department also deploy kind of drone to identify where the vehicle come from so that you can go after them after?
We didn't use our drone in this capacity. In this situation, that's not an operation for the drone. It's more suited for the helicopter.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief, for this successful operation here.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I got just a couple of questions for you. It was a successful sweep about the dirt bike and illegal driving in the street. However, my question is that, are we continue to enforce that, Chief? Because the residents say, great, you know, we net a lot of illegal bike and all that. Are we continue that on a regular basis as the summer continue? Number two, my question is, is the police is working with the city to continue educational, put out press release to let people know that dirt bike on the street is illegal, things like that? So that's just my two question. And the resident asked me about that, and that's why I want to pass it on to you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. So, yes, we do. These are ongoing things that happen, as Counselor Getchea said. Our patrol officers are out there every day, and when they're able to, and while they're operating within the policy of the Lowell Police Department to interdict and intervene in these situations, they do. Sometimes we all know that that's not possible all the time. Unfortunately, nobody would, wants to see that happen more than the police, but they also have to take into account the safety of the public when they make those decisions to try to stop those individuals and the bikes. We know how much they are, they're agile vehicles and they're able to elude us. So we have to be very cognizant of that when we go after them. So, yes, we will be doing this on an ongoing basis, and as needed, when we bring in our partners from the state police and environmental police. As far as the social media, absolutely, we can put, we can put something out. And just as a follow-up, we didn't just target the motorbikes and the dirt bikes. We also targeted the pedal bikes in the downtown area the following week, and we seized approximately 24 pedal bikes, and of the 24, we returned 20 of them and gave, it was more of an educational, we had the parents come down and gave them an education as to what's acceptable and what's not, especially in the downtown area. And we returned 20 of those bikes with that, with that education that went along with it. So it's not just enforcement, but it's education, and we'll look to continue that.
I think that's a great, great approach, Chief. Thank you. And I mentioned to the resident who brought it up, they were senior person, senior person, and I told them that they could report anonymously the source of where those dirt bike are coming from, and they were kind of afraid, but I said, you know, if you call and then without having to identify yourself, at least just to let the police know the sources of the dirt bike that make a lot of noise are coming from, and let the police take from there. I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion Response C, welcome sign, Counselor Yem.
This is a great, great sign, and I'm hoping that through you, Mr. Mayor, to Melissa, maybe this sign will be complete by, and maybe by the centennial celebration next year in March, so, because it's a big celebration of the city, 200 years, and we have this done by then, it will be great. So it's a great-looking sign. Thank you so much for the response.
Motion Response D, Senior Playground, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you very much. I think this is great. I'd like to thank my colleagues in DPD. I thank my colleagues for bringing this on the road to the Senior Center to begin the conversation, and I think it's something that hopefully the seniors of the city will get to enjoy in the future, once we can work through what they'd like to have. So, thank you.
Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with this motion response, could I do my senior playground subcommittee report?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
One second. Section 7, 7.1, motion out of order by Counselor Getchea, second by Counselor Janess, to take the senior citizen subcommittee from June 12, 2025, out of order, all the favors AI, opposed motion passes. Chairwoman Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The senior citizen subcommittee held a meeting at the Senior Center on Thursday, June 12, 2025, at 1 o'clock with members Counselor Getchea, Counselor Dakota, and myself, along with Yovani Bias Rose, DPD Director, Kim Gagnon, Director of the Senior Center. I will include Lynn Daly because she is very instrumental in gathering and informing seniors of this meeting, and as always, City Clerk Michael Gary. Way back in April of 29th, Counselor Corey Robinson made a motion to have the property department explore potential options to create a senior playground. This motion was referred to our senior subcommittee, and on June 12, Yovani Bias Rose addressed this topic. She informed us that the senior playground is a recreational space designed specifically to serve the needs of older adults in the community, and that manufacturers create equipment geared for this population to support physical and mental well-being. She further told us that the city has an open space and a recreational plan, so to put it in parentheses, OSRP, that's short for it, which is a community planning process that will guide the city's parks and recreation goals for the next 10 years. And as part of the outreach process for the OSRP, the city will be hosting a number of engagement opportunities to gather feedback, including a focus group. And I say this because in our newsletters, the Senior Heritage Newspaper today, the Department of Planning and Development is exploring this idea, and they're more, and they want to have the public, especially the seniors, come learn more about the concept and provide feedback for the planning team to help make Lowell's open space more accessible to our seniors. So that event is a meeting that's going to take place on July 10, at 10:00 AM on Thursday, at 10 o'clock in the morning. So if people are listening and they want to write that down and they want to have input, that's where you're going to come to the Senior Center. The focus group meeting will be advertised online as well in the Senior Center newsletter, as I just read, and the city website. The idea of a senior playground, and as the motion also stated, was location. And at our senior subcommittee, we discussed Harmony Park at One Cork Street and different areas next to the Senior Center, existing parks and open spaces, et cetera. We opened the discussion up to those present, and questions were asked about dogs being at the park, also what type of equipment will be used, how will other seniors offer their concerns about the senior playground, and who are not present there, and you know that there's going to be other informal meetings, the OSRP planning process meetings, the first of which is what I just said, July 10, again, at 10:00 AM. We then opened up the meeting to other issues such as a bench along River Road for walkers, air conditioning in the building, speeding, et cetera. Maxine Farkas commented on drywall vendor unloading products on the street. Western Avenue, increased traffic, streetlights, issues on Western Avenue. These streetlights that they have on Western Avenue are so bright that it interferes with each unit, and it keeps them up because it's so bright. With all that was discussed, three motions were made. So, Mr. Mayor, three motions were made, so I just want to inform my colleagues. Motion one was to have the city explore disability seating for events throughout the city, and there were three yeas there. Then the second motion was to provide traffic mitigation plan for Swan and Bigelow Streets due to the Gorm Street Bridge construction. The bridge will be closed, they say for three years. They wanted to know if they could have some mitigation so it's not used as a cut-through as quite relevant as it always seems to be. It'll be worse. Motion three was to request traffic engineers look into the feasibility of placing a solar digital speed limit sign between Nesmith Street and Waverly Avenue, and in between Concord and High Streets, because Rogers Street is where speeding is occurring. And I mentioned to the person that was there, which was the sector commander, I think it was Dennis, I mean Danny Damaris, and I said, I hope that we don't have the digital sign on Douglas Road that's not working properly because you don't read the numbers. And as a matter of fact, they took it right out of there, so thank you. I think they're going to repair it, at least I hope that's what's going to happen. So our meeting ended at 2:10, so thank you very much for everybody that attended. It was a nice discussion.
Thank you. Thank you to DPD. Thank you to Mr. Fuller, the Building Commissioner. This project's good size, I noticed initially when the neighbors of the project told me it was clear-cut. There was no erosion control, but there since has been installed with hay bales, and I believe they may have some silks stock, so greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Got you.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the response. Greatly appreciated. And when we, where the Disability Commission reconvenes in August, we'll go over the report and get back to you, but thank you very much. It's going to be very welcome information. Thank you again. Thank you. Moving on, motion response G, Front Runner City, Open House, Counselors Belangia and Scott. Counselor Scott, you want to go first?
Sure. Thank you for the response. It's exciting to see that we're moving forward with the next step. I guess the only question that I did have on it is possibly for Assistant City Manager Yovani Bias is just how many projects are we presenting to them, and how many developers are we including in this, I guess?
Thank you. So we plan to do a couple different sort of iterations of opportunities, I guess, that we're going to show them over the course of their visit. So on one day, we'll be bringing them, we'll be convening a group of nonprofit organizations from across the city to talk about their sort of, what they work on actively, what they're sort of interested in pursuing. So we're convening nonprofit executive directors here to talk about those things, and then we're taking them on a sort of driving tour of Lowell. Well, first, we're going to do a walking tour of downtown. We'll walk them over to the Hilldrewth Building as an example of a project that is actively renovating upper stories from sort of vacant commercial space into housing. So we'll be doing a walk of downtown, and then we are taking them on a bus ride essentially throughout the city. We have, I think, 11 stops identified sort of to try to show them opportunities in various locations, a mix of projects that are related to housing potential, commercial potential in industrial areas, manufacturing areas, so trying to give them a pretty decent snapshot of opportunities that exist across the city. We've selected about 11 locations that we think also have adjacencies with other projects that we want to let them know about. So, for example, you know, bringing them over to Pataqueville, talking about the Work Bridge, you know, not something that we're necessarily looking at them to invest in, but I think it's a, the scale of a project like that is important that they understand is happening in the city. So right now, we have about 11 locations that we're doing on that bus tour, and then in addition to that, the following day, we'll be separately doing a driving tour of the area in and around Link, so they understand the sort of, what's happening at that development site, as well as bringing in, I think we've invited seven or eight developers, local developers that are actively investing in Lowell today. So these are, and they're developers of different sizes and scale, but all of them are actively investing in Lowell today. So we're doing a larger meeting where there'll be open discussion with the delegation from the Front Runner community, and then we've asked each of those development groups to be prepared to do a one-on-one with the delegation, so they can tell them a little bit more about their particular business, their particular projects that they have underway, or what they have in the pipeline, and what their sort of, their expertise is.
Thank you for that. Thank you for all of your work on this. It's just very impressive, and I'm sure you're going to put an incredible portfolio together for them to see. And thank you to the mayor for bringing this forward as well.
Counselor Belangia?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Yovani. Great report. I'll be honest, I did not think this would happen this soon, and thank you for that. I love how it's incorporated with the visit of the Front Runner City program and those individuals, and along as local and regional developers, the focus on, and Yovani, to you, is, you know, I want, obviously, we get all these developers on a bus, whatever it may be, you know, where the most potential is for development is obviously what we want them to see, right? HCID, the MBTA Overlay District, the Link Project, obviously where we can afford to have a lot more groundbreaking. And as well as you, I see what you're doing, you're incorporating the projects we got going on too, to make everything, all the connectivity, make all that happen as well. So I like that aspect. Look, very much looking forward to this event, and great work, everybody, and it's going to be an exciting couple of days. It's going, that could be very instrumental for our future. So I'll be on hand. Thank you very much again.
Counselor Yem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question. I know the SDG Pavilion has different goals, and one of them is cultural preservation. I hope that even though the Smith Baker Center will not be ready for awarding the grants development to anyone yet, but it also, one of the piece that we could mention something as part of the city, SD, you know, SDG component, because I think in Toronto, there is very big on cultural preservation, and the city of Lowell has all of that in our plates already. So I would love to say something and mention something about cultural preservation as part of that too as well. Thank you.
Ms. Bias Rose?
Yes, thank you. I do want to just make sure to mention that right now, we have a delegation tentatively scheduled to visit Lowell July 7th, 8th, 9th? No, wait. 8th, 9th, 10th. And so the, we hope that they'll be able to arrive in time to actually come to the council meeting that evening, the first night, and be able to address the council and the community, to introduce themselves in the program a little bit in more detail. So we're actively working on pulling together that visit, and, you know, I think, once people are able to hear from them directly as opposed to through us, it'll help enlighten folks in the community a bit more about what this program is and why we've been working hard to actively pursue it.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Outstanding. Motion Response H, Maintenance of Walkways, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'm glad to see, I know sometimes it's kind of a gray area with who's responsible, especially in the winter, but I'm glad to see, you know, we're paying attention to this. Thank you.
Motion Response I, Responsibilities, National Grid Installation of New Poles, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only question I have, I just want to confirm, you said Manchester Street, they are going to remove the poles that are there?
Mr. Cho?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's two on Manchester Street that are impeding the walkway a little bit, so those will be removed on July 9. The others, it has to go through the double pole system, the engines, where people have to remove the property, different utility companies, so those will be a little bit longer, but the two that are impeding will be removed.
That are right in the walkway?
Right. Those two will be gone.
Thank you.
Motion Response J, Clean Slate Letter to Delegation and Congresswoman, Counselor Robinson.
Greatly appreciated by the administration. I think it was written very well and hits on all the key points, so thank you.
We were on to section, oh, sorry, motion accepted or placed on file by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Scott, all the favors AI, opposed motion passes. 4.2, Communication, The Resignation of Martha Howe from the License Commission, motion to accept and placed on file by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Janess, all the favors AI, opposed motion passes. 4.3, A Communication of the Reappointment of Clifford Krieger to the License Commission, motion to adopt by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Yem. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Counselor Belangia?
Counselor Cho?
Yes. 4.4, Communication, City Manager Request Approval of Outstate Travel for Lowell Police Department, a motion to adopt by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Cho. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Counselor Belangia?
Counselor Cho?
Yes. 4.4, Communication, City Manager Request Approval of Outstate Travel for Lowell Police Department, a motion to adopt by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Cho. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Counselor Belangia?
Counselor Cho?
Yes. 4.4, Communication, City Manager Request Approval of Outstate Travel for Lowell Police Department, a motion to adopt by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Cho. We'll call Madam Clerk. 5.5, A Transfer of $101,883 Ride Share. 5.6, Vote to Transfer $20,000 to Disability Commission Revolving Fund. 5.7, A Vote to Transfer $74,500 for Demolitions. 5.8, An Authorized Payment of Bills Incurred in Excess of Appropriations. And 5.9, Vote to Accept Expend $247,870.21 Shared Streets and Spaces by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Dakota.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. I just have one comment, I hope nobody's upset with what I say, but every time, well, I can hear the frustration when the school department comes before us and they have some bad bills we have to pay, and we do. Now the police department is coming with us, to us with some, for the fiscal year unpaid invoices. So to me, this is, this occurs, it's a part of business. We, we don't say to the people that we, that service the schools or the police department, hurry up with that invoice, you better bring it in by a certain time. So if you can have a little bit more patience, because these things occur. So I just wanted to point that out and I am supporting it, thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions, or actually, one of my colleagues, Counsel Dakota, he brought it up last Tuesday, I believe, on, what number is this? The vote for the Portuguese American Youth Center extension there, lease agreement? Would you like to go, Counsel Dakota, on the question?
Thank you Counselor. Actually, I did a self-tour today and went to see the building. There's already a ring built, 24 by 24 ring, bags all over the place. So it looks very promising and obviously, it's geared, and maybe Chief Houdon can clarify it for us, but it's more for 13 to 16-year-old kids, to youth services. But obviously, with the Nationals coming here in two years with the Golden Gloves, I would hope that we would try to push forward, maybe through the administration, in trying to get some high school kids into the program, because they did a great job over it, over there with the ring and everything, it's very professional. I would only say that, I would ask Chief Houdon, I know this is part of the Shannon Grant, that obviously, some of this, the times would have to be a little bit longer for the fact that most of these kids, if they're 17, 18, 19, have full-time jobs and they would have to work out six to eight, six to nine, but that may take the time of having a police officer there just due to liability issues, I would imagine. But Chief, maybe you can expound upon that?
Thank you Counselor. Yeah, this is, we have our SROs that direct a lot of our boxers into that program. We can certainly look into ways of expanding it with the Nationals coming up. I know the managers reached out and we're trying to vet some ideas at this point. Clearly, we have to make sure when we have kids in there that we know who's in there and, you know, everybody's Corey certified and keeping an eye on the kids, keeping them busy.
Yeah, it just would be an embarrassment if Lowell didn't have a team at the Nationals here, right in Lowell, so I hope we, hopefully we can push forward to that. Thank you very much. Thank you Counselor.
Counsel Gitchia? I'm sorry, Counsel Robinson, you done?
Oh no, I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Gitchia, go ahead.
Three, Mr. Mayor, while we still have the chief here, going back to Counsel Mursia's point about procurement, there are different worlds in procurement, so I don't want anybody to think that the police department is anywhere near what the school department is. And anybody who's done procurement understands anything over 10 grand is much, much different in the procurement world than under 10 grand. One thing that really is concerning is, it says no request to purchase from Gil Rowhouse. How did someone buy something if it wasn't requested through, through the person?
So what happened is, he did make the request, what he didn't do was get a purchase order, which is what he was required to do.
Okay, so he didn't go to the right, proper channels, but anything under 10 grand is just use good practices. So there's major differences in the procurement world. No way is the police department anywhere near or anything wasn't paid like the school department. And I would stand by that. This is the first one I've seen from your department that hasn't been paid, so I don't want anybody to cross over in the public and think that you are now the school department because it's not close. And I understand that bad bills happen, when they're under $10,000, you can see it. And this one, the highest one in here, there's multiple ones, was $2,788. So it wasn't like it was an extreme amount that was done by the city side. And I would tell the school department the same thing, they should follow procurement laws. And even if there was no purchase order done, that's a city piece that goes on, not the state procurement. They just say use good practices, so, and it doesn't look like anyone was favored in the purchase of this, so I'll be supporting it, thank you.
Roll call, Madam, Counsel Robinson?
I just had one more question on, is, on 5.7, is 290 Branch the problem, was the property that we had problems with for a while? So, so the city ended up taking ownership of that due to liens and everything, is that the case? Oh, that's excellent. And so the plan on that will be get it knocked down, demolish it and then probably auction it off or something like that at that point?
Probably, yeah, that's how it usually works.
Okay, thank you, I'm glad to see that that problem property is getting a fresh new start, so thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge 5.9 and say that I was excited to see that this has been a project that's been on DPD's radar for quite a while. And so I'm happy to see this getting funded and moving forward. It's really crosswalks in front of the Community Health Center and building a raised intersection to slow traffic down through there. I think this is a great use of these funds and look forward to this project being completed.
Votes have been fresh and secondary, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mursia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger? Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Six Orders of the City Manager, 6.1, Order of Taking 40 Market Street, with the first reading and second reading by title, the Motion to Adopt by Counsel Mursia, second by Counsel Yem, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
No.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mursia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
6.2, Order of 60-day Trial, the Motion to Adopt by Counsel Dakota, second by Counsel Gitchia, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mursia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Section 8, Petitions, 8.1, we have five property dealers claims, Motion to Refer to Law Department for Appropriate Condition by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Noon, all in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. 8.2, Chokyab Sarab, Request Removal of Handicap Parking Sign at 197-199 Powell Street, Motion to Refer to the Transportation Engineer for Appropriate Condition by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Dakota, all in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 9, Announcements, Counsel Janess?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Earlier this afternoon, the city sent out an announcement that no parking signs will be up this afternoon for overnight parking, banning overnight parking on, starting at 8 p.m. on Central Street from Middlesex to Merrimack, on Market Street from Central to Dutton, and on Merrimack Street from Carney Square to the library. This is to facilitate a paving project overnight and I just want to mention it in case anyone happened to be watching and had their car on the street. Thank you.
Any others? Motion Adjourned by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Mursia, good evening.